Officer Hart, would you please start us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
You wish to remain standing, we're gonna have a prayer, please.
Father God, we come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for everything that you've done for us today. We thank you for your peace and your love towards us and your mercy. We ask for your perfect will to be done here in this chambers tonight, Lord. We ask for wisdom and we ask for guidance. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Need a roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segula?
Here.
Counselor Ellipar?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
The core must define.
Modification to the agenda? Need a motion?
I move to modify the agenda. Moving items E and F to the bottom of the group. And we will start with Brothers Keepers underscheduled appearances.
And I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda per staff's request. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Segula?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular February meeting. Regular meeting February 21st and we're agreeing to approve approval of accounts payable. Need a motion, please?
And will we accept the minutes of the regular meeting and review and approval of accounts payable from February 21st, 2019?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we approve approval of the consent agenda? Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Counselor Segula?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We've been waiting for chief on this one. Proclamations, communications, and appointments swearing in of new officers.
Thanks, Mayor. It's always a fun part for me, either to invite employees on board or get to recognize people who've stayed on board. That's kind of a good thing. I don't know how you look at it. We're gonna start with our newest police officer, Michael Agla. Introduce yourself and tell us who you might have brought to the meeting.
Yeah, my name is Michael Agla. I brought my parents, Cory and I brought my uncle.
And you wanna tell the crowd what you're doing?
Well, glad to be here. Happy to be here last year. Worked up in Solange at the jail and then just over to the road. I think that'd be interesting. If you're offering this to them, I'd be so happy. Love it.
Right. Who would you like to pin your badge tonight?
Mine's that one.
Sir? At least in two years. All right, now the formal. Raise your right hand and feet out. Aye, Michael Agla.
Aye, Michael Agla.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That on my honor?
That on my honor?
I will never betray my integrity?
I will never betray my integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself?
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards?
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community?
And uphold the values of my community.
And the agency for which I serve?
And the agency for which I serve.
I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
The state of Colorado?
The state of Colorado.
The city of Montevista Charter?
The city of Montevista Charter.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
Code of Ethics?
Code of Ethics.
Mission Statement?
Mission Statement.
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande?
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande.
I swear to carry out all my duties?
I swear to carry out all my duties.
Acting in accordance with the above reference guidelines?
Acting in accordance with the above reference guidelines.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of police officer?
And I will faithfully perform the duties of police officer?
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed?
And upon which I am blessed?
And upon which I am blessed.
Another new officer, our code enforcement officer. Truly thankless job, but we found another person willing to take on the responsibility and task he's hiding over there. Patrick Montoya. I think we've all agreed that you're needed and appreciated. And tell us a little about yourself and introduce anybody who might have been called.
Happy to go up to Colorado, needed. Just recently moved back to San Luis Valley. Very fortunate enough to give this position here in my department. I'm looking forward to helping everybody and everybody who has that.
Pretty excited to have you. Pretty happy here. And my wife, Michelle?
Over here.
And my son Matt? Welcome. Really happy to have him. I don't want to be a code officer, but brings a lot of experience, I think, a lot of maturity to the position, which can be very difficult. As you know, the city has lots to do in this area. Same, same. Raise your right hand and feet out for me. Aye, Patrick Montoya?
Aye, Patrick Montoya.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That on my honor?
That on my honor?
I will never betray my integrity?
I will never betray my integrity.
My character or the public trust?
My character or the public trust.
And that I will have the courage to hold myself?
And that I will have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards?
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community?
And uphold the values of my community.
The agency I serve?
The agency I serve.
And that I will support the Constitution?
And that I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
The state of Colorado?
The state of Colorado.
The city of Montevista Charter?
The city of Montevista Charter.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
Code of Ethics?
Code of Ethics.
Mission Statement?
Mission Statement.
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande?
And the laws of the county of Rio Grande.
I swear to carry out all my duties?
I swear to carry out all my duties.
Acting in accordance with your above reference guidelines?
Acting in accordance with your above guidelines.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of code enforcement officer?
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of code enforcement officer?
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed?
And upon which I am blessed?
And upon which I am blessed.
Josh Hill? I'm the senator. So like I said, the second part of this is honoring those who stuck around, put up with us. So Josh Hill's been here a year. I'm not exactly sure if he did it in exact service state. But you're in. He's here. Sex a lot. That place? Nice look. We could kinda talk. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody else here need a service ward?
No, there's none.
Okay. Go on to citizen comments. And special presentations. Scheduled appearances in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please follow appropriate form of the city clerk no later than noon by mighty prior to the meeting. Brothers Keepers.
Good evening, counsel. So before you is a request for a discount for the use of Sky High for Brothers Keepers. They are a nonprofit organization. Staff does recommend approval of this discount. Before you is also a letter that was presented from Brothers Keepers. And I'll let Mr. Claire speak on behalf of Brothers Keepers.
Good evening, counsel. Just to let everybody know, my name is Jim Clare, Valley resident all my life and retired from the Montevista Fire Department. It was 25 years of service as assistant chief. And the reason I bring that up is because Brothers Keepers is a fraternal order of motorcycle riders that is strictly active or retired firefighters. There's chapters all across the United States, approximately 27 active chapters at this time. Most of those chapters seek out in an event, a charity fundraiser of some kind. A lot of them look for burn fund charity events. And it might be something as far as just local charity event. But in our case, we've tied up with the Veterans Coalition of the San Luis Valley. And as most of you may remember, we had an event last year, which was the first event in the valley. And with that, what we do is all the funding that goes to that, once all of our expenses are met, that goes to the Veterans Coalition. We've worked with Richard Negley for some time now. And we think the group that we are working with and the fundraiser that we're working for is very much needed in the San Luis Valley. As most of you know, being in the southern part of the state, we're kinda in an island out here. It's hard to get service. Revenues aren't exorbitant. And so it's hard just to get service for these people. And with that, we want to keep in mind that with them, we wouldn't have a lot of the pleasures that we enjoy today. So with that, that's one of the reasons that we request the funding be reduced for the activity at Sky High Park. As you know, last year, we had it by the bowling alley. This year, we're gonna try and move it out to Sky High Park and make a bigger and better venue for the event. We hope to continue this event through the years and continue to bring it to the town of Montevista. We feel, like I said before, it's definitely a needed charity fundraiser. And the firemen that are associated with the Brothers Keeper, which there's approximately 15 at this time in the valley region, and we cover all the way down in the northern part of New Mexico, down in the quest with some of the members. But we definitely think this is very important. And we would definitely request your consideration on this reduction in the fee. We hope you give from your heart and later on, we'll get you to give from your pocketbook, we hope. So with that, I would like to finish our request with that and ask your consideration for the fee reduction.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am.
I move that we reduce the fee for the Brothers Keepers and Sky High Park. It's a wonderful organization and a good cause.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we reduce the price of the rental for Sky High Park for Brothers Keepers? Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segula?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellipar?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and we greatly appreciate the council and the work that the city has done with us in the past and continues to do with us, working up to this event. They've been a great help in more ways than one, and we hope to continue that partnership. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jim. Scott? Thank you, guys, for being here. Okay, when you guys come up here to the podium, be sure and sign the paper that's there. Be sure and talk clearly into the microphone so you're clearly understood. Mr. Spielman?
For the record, my name is Charles Spielman, and I'm president of the Montevista Economic Development Corporation. Based on what I've heard and observed these past few months, it occurred to me that a summary of the current status and some of the history of business development in and around Montevista might be helpful to the city council as well as to interested citizens as we consider the subject tonight. First, it seems clear to me that Finell and Debbie Garcia are presently the stars of business development here. They've offered a half year or more of free rent and utilities to any of their four downtown properties to any fledgling business that offers a viable business plan. And that's now happened in all four of their properties. And in addition, they've now opened an outstanding ladies clothing store on Main Street. Then there's Mrs. Kim, who boldly bought the Montevilla Hotel last year and is working hard to refurbish rooms and restore the hotel to some of its former glory. By the way, she says all available rooms are booked for the Crane Festival. Last year also, Carol Rigenbaugh and company completed her purchase of the facet building. And she and her son are planning and building toward having a brew pub, a coffee shop, a rental apartment, and an elder care business in the building. Susan McCullough has opened a gallery on Main Street from which to sell her outstanding landscapes and teach art classes. We have a new flower shop, a bookstore, and a recycled household and gift store on North Washington. The outstanding pizza restaurant that was in the hotel is looking to relocate somewhere else downtown. The family is looking to take over the Sugar Shack and sell fudge and ice cream there this summer. The Chamber of Commerce and its individual members continue their business development activities. Los Conquistadores seeks, recognizes, and promotes new businesses. Quanis and Rotary remain active in promoting new businesses. The Police Chief's Advisory Board is helping to create and maintain a community attractive to new business. And the Montevista Economic Development Corporation continues its business development efforts which go back to 2005. We've had a role in encouraging Quincy's to locate here and in helping start and maintain the dirt drags out at the movie manor. The number of other business development efforts, too numerous to list here. The upshot of all this is that there are conservatively over 35 knowledgeable and dedicated Montovistans working at least part-time on business development here. Our efforts, one way or another, are beginning to be really successful for the first time in recent memory. I get music. In recent memory. And they really are standing out the first time, and most importantly, none of this costs the city a penny. So I have to question the city's logic in paying a newcomer of unknown background and ability over $4,100 a month for many months to do business development here. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have none, Charlie. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Let's go to the most. I think we modified the agenda.
We moved back to the back of the agenda?
Oh.
We amended that, remember?
I couldn't hear a word you said.
Probably because I was talking to myself. Sorry, girls, we moved things around for you. Sorry about that. We just like you being here, so we wanted to keep you around. Sky High renovation? The Carlas and Kathy? Be sure and talk clearly into the mic and sign in. Please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The triple K's.
That sounds like a troublesome group right there.
It is. Thank you for having us today, counsel. Yes, thank you, counsel, for hearing us. We would also like to say thank you for the work session the other night. We appreciate that. A little background is, in 2017, Kathy and I had come before the previous council and had discussed taking a lead with a citizens advocate group for renovation of Sky High Park. At that time, the particular council agreed to that particular suggestion, and we were moving forward. Because council has since changed, we thought we needed clarification if this present council wanted to move forward with that same type of arrangement. So again, we appreciate the work session that we had the other night and whether or not you would like for the citizens group to move forward on taking the lead of the Sky High Park multipurpose building renovation, or if you'd like for the city management team to take over. Ladies, anything?
I think definitely this is a project that is gonna take a village, so it's gonna take all of us. But we feel that there's been real success in the past of citizen-led projects like this. We feel like we can go after some monies from granting agencies and such. We've already done a little bit of that, and we're continuing to work on that. There's a lot that we can do as citizens, along with the city and the chamber and all those other people that are involved. And there's already a rather large group that have been brainstorming and working on it. So we feel together, we can really make this happen. And it's such a big need for the whole entire San Luis Valley and especially our Montevista area. Like a lot of you, I was born and raised here. My mom was Miss Stampede in White Year, Charlie, 1943 or something like that.
37.
37. Even worse than that. So that tells you how old I am. My dad had some building, some of the part of building, the building that is there now. So the history is there, and we have an opportunity here together to make that building something that is more usable for everybody in the valley to be able to have big events, and much more usable for our Sky High Stampede, the biggest event we have here, so.
And the Brothers Keepers tonight.
Yeah, just as we heard about that event tonight. So we're here to roll up our sleeves and work on that if you want us to continue forward. We're coming back to this council to see how you want us to go forward.
Motion or hit not? I think a motion would be nice, Mayor. Okay.
Well, I would move to have the, I think you guys are now gonna call yourself the Friends of Stampede?
Friends of Sky High Park.
The Friends of Sky High Park?
Yes.
I move to have the Friends of Sky High Park continue as a citizen-led group for the promotion and construction and remodeling of the Sky High Park area. I second that. I think you guys have done a great job, and every one of you grew up here, and Carla has deep ties here, too. And I just feel like a citizens group is probably the best way to do that and get things done with the backing of the city and the council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We're hard at it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Go forth and conquer.
I'll voice my opinion on this. These ladies have worked very hard. For those in the group here that don't know them or know what they're doing, they do a really great job on what they're doing. And as a citizen-led group, I think it'd be a very positive move for the city as well as the community, and more so the community, because it's very important. If we lose anything out there, then we're gonna struggle to get it back, and we can't afford to lose anything. So that's my discussion. Anybody else?
And just for clarification to the community, we're looking at this to be a two, maybe three-year project. By the time you actually see building, we hope to have some, should just move forward, some visible signs early on, but the actual building will probably just for everyone's knowledge in two to three years, by the time we line all the funding up.
Awesome.
And that's still amazing to me. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have a new facility out there that could be used? Thank you, guys.
And you know, too, on a selfish note, Stampede's gonna be 100 years old. I would love for all of the, you know, the moon, the stars, and everything to be in alignment so that we could have that celebration in a really new facility. That may be pushing it, because that's a year sooner than what Carla was just talking about, but if we get the momentum going, it's a possibility. So we would like, you know, if the community could back us on that, we would really like to shoot for that. If we can't, if we can't, that's okay. We'll still have a good time, so.
We'll have one last party out there at the 100-year celebration, and then we'll move forward with the next time.
That's right. And one thing that will be vital when we're seeking funding is that it is a community project and that they see that the community is involved. 4-H that has a big part out there, we need to get everybody involved in physically helping with this project and pitching in. So we're gonna be asking for the community to really be part of it.
And as Kathy said, as far as like the fair being involved, and I'll put that pitch in because I was on fair board for several years, that's a six-county fair. It's not just Montevista or Rio Grande County Fair. So it represents the whole San Luis Valley, including Hinsdale, Creed. And the involvement from the youth, I believe there are about 150 to 180 this year, so it's a big group of kids. I still stay in touch with what's going on, and that's important, because that's the youth, that's our future. And looking out here, there's a lot of gray-haired people, Charlie. That, that is our future, and we really need to keep that in mind. So it is a community event, so it's not just Stampede, for those of you who just think that's what it's all about. I can go back into history of my family, and one of my uncles rode in that rodeo. And I've actually seen pictures of it, and he passed away at 95, and he passed away like 15 years ago. So that tells you. away like fifteen years ago, so that tells you the history of the Stampede. So I think it's very, very important for this community to really get involved with that, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nita?
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Sivola?
Aye.
Councilor Oresko?
Aye.
Mayor Weber?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now go forth and conquer.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tax initiative.
So as a result of the last work session we held, the council, we had a discussion about a potential 2019 sales tax initiative. In your packet is a memo in that regards, and I think just for the public certification, one portion of that would be towards funding for, the citizens' committee is going to work on the new building, which is a pretty large task. One of the things that we think is important, and the council thinks is important, is that that building has a, a large component of recreational activities for youth and adults, and so really they're working on getting this building to happen. And part of this initiative would be to create funding to do recreational programming as well, so kind of help to finish out the building and add some of the aspects for youth recreation programs. We also have, and Jaime's not here this evening, so I'll just, you know, we have a, an adult basketball league, and actually this year, he had to turn teams away. So there's fourteen teams, which is more than Alamosa has in their adult basketball league, and some of those teams are coming over from there. So anyway, there's a lot of interest in adult sports and youth sports and senior sports, and so we hope that we could program the facility to not only handle our big events like the Crane Festival, everyone's going to that this weekend, I'm sure, those events as well as recreational programming for our citizens. So that is definitely a part of this proposal, as well as some, some funding for the police department and for Public Works. And the Public Works would be primarily aimed towards street and parks maintenance, and street being the key thing there, of getting us more money for street maintenance. If this moves forward, it would be on the ballot this November. We, you know, Nita got me some more information on our timing, and that would have to be filed by the twenty-sixth of July with the county for it to move forward. I would recommend to the council that we set a work session for March nineteenth to talk about that a little bit more, and also, you know, I'm going to, you guys are going to love this, but to also bring back our little branding exercise. Maybe we could finish that up at the same time. But anyway, I kind of outlined the, the distribution of funds that would be possible under that. If this went forward, it's a one-penny sales tax, no property taxes, and the tax would be imposed in 2020. So a lot of ground to cover before we get there. This is just kind of introduction of the issue. I've got some more information I'm working on for council. I've been in touch with our bond council, who we use from time to time for Cootac Rock, worked on a refinancing, they've been working with us for at least twenty years, and the same gentleman, so we've had some discussions about this, and we're still putting together some of that information. So more of an informational thing this evening, other than I believe that when we talked at the work session, that y'all were very interested in doing this, and I think, I don't know if it's a head nod tonight, or if we're just, if you all want to continue to pursue this, that we'd have that work session, and we'd start putting things more together.
Well, you'd get my head nod. I will say, comment-wise, I think it's important that we look at this as a community is always asking for more, and this is where, as they said, the village, we all need to participate in this. We want to make our community better. This is something that we need to really look at as a community, because that is asking of everybody here. So I think it's very important that everybody's aware of that. We're not asking a lot, but it is beneficial to this community in a great way. So you have my head nod. Forrest, carry on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hello.
All right, thank you. So hopefully, we'll do that work session, and we can talk some more about it, and I'll have a few more details for you, and then we'll start taking a few cues, and then based on this tonight, I've got some phone calls to make tomorrow as well, before we head down to Crane Festival tomorrow morning. So, thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
All right. I wasn't expecting to be back this soon, but we figured we'd go ahead and just get this done. So I'm just here to let the board know that we do not plan on renewing our contract with the city to continue with economic development with the town, and I would like to go through some of the things that we've been working on. There's been some miscommunication and some different things that were, have been said, and so I just wanted to make sure that we had the record straight, and so I wanted to give you guys a full report on everything we've been working on this last year, so we can go from there. And I just want everybody to understand, please understand that this report does not reflect everyone in this town, everyone in the city. It does, however, address a small group of people that claim to be supporters of this town, but only if it suits them. And so, my father, he, he worked twenty-two years in the Army, and as you can imagine, I've, I've moved all over the place. I've lived in many communities. Matter of fact, I've had, I think I moved five times. We had, I had five different first-grade teachers, and it wasn't because I got held back, so, you know, I've, I've moved all over the place. And, you know, when we moved down here to Montevista, I told you guys from the beginning, it was here, I was here to get away, and then when I noticed so many empty buildings in town, I thought maybe I could lend a hand and figure out a way to come up with a solution to help. I moved here because the town, I felt, was undervalued, and I thought that, you know, we could do something different here. And then after, I've been here for a year, and after I've interviewed several businesses in town, I just feel like, you know, there's some hard reasons why it's undervalued, and I'd like to go through those so that you guys understand those. Some of the strong points, let's get those out of the way, I want to, like to make sure that we try to keep as much positivity in the community as possible. You guys have an amazing history. You guys got amazing rodeo, you got amazing fairgrounds. That is one of the gems of the town, and I would love to see you guys continue to put on events and working with people that are putting on events there to grow those and get those up and going strong. There is room to grow here, both, both in the residential area as well as the commercial area, as long as we figure out ways to do that, which we've talked about in previous meetings. You guys got high-speed internet, you've got a solid infrastructure, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of possibilities to get electronic companies here, or get other businesses here that are either agricultural-related or not. That's the beauty of it. But what I've learned, in my experience here over the last year, has not been one-hundred percent positive, as you guys are well aware. And to be honest, I've never been treated as unkind by the people that claim to be community service-oriented, as I have in this community. I've been called just about every name in the book. I've had my integrity questioned. I've had my kids who worked in the community, that people didn't know they were my kids, and sit there and they get to overhear conversations about people that were completely spreading flat-out lies and rumors, and just pure gossip. I've even taken my kids last Friday to, out to dinner, and had somebody sit there and glare at me the whole time while I was sitting there having dinner with my family. You know, I've been in business for over twenty-five years. I stated that with you guys when I first started this. I've started, sold over forty companies, and, you know, what's interesting is, selling those companies, sometimes you end up with bad experiences. Of over, over forty companies that I've dealt with, I've never had a negative experience in a transition or selling a company, never. I've had my background researched by New York Times, Discovery Channel, and dozens of other national publications, without ever anybody finding anything negative to post or write about me. Yet, I lived here one year, and my integrity's been questioned, I've been called names, such as Flim Flam Man, and just didn't think that was very cool. So, you know, what really amazes me, though, about all these people that have had nothing negative to say about me is, not one of them has ever come up and talked to me. Not one of them has ever asked what our plans are, what we're doing, getting it straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, not one. I hear it on Facebook, I hear it in the community, I hear it second-hand, third-hand, and when you start hearing it multiple times from different people about the same people, it starts to create a track record. I find it cowardly. I really do. When I first started this venture with Montevista, I was very enthusiastic. Matter of fact, I called other cities because I thought in this valley that would be great, because there was opportunities that might not fit here, but might fit in other places. There was only one person that actually treated me pretty bad on those calls, and that was Heather Brooks, who was the city manager of Alamosa. She said, I said, "Hey, my name is Ron Douglas, I'm with Local Business Assist." She goes, "I know who you are, we're not interested." Click, and hung up on me. I did nothing to her, I didn't know anything about her, and, but it's interesting to see what's happened in that city in the last year. Again, I've only been here a year. I don't have history here, and I don't know what's going on over there, but they've lost Rialto's, Nestle Toll House, Valley Food Co-op, Greek Restaurant, the Diamond Resources, a check-cashing store, and most importantly, just announced Payless Shoe Store and J.C. Penney's. You want to talk about a hit to the community and a hit to the valley, that's going to be hard. There's one common denominator when a, when a city loses that many businesses. They do not have somebody actively working on economic development. Now, I've had my, I've had the metrics questioned a couple of times. Kathy, you know what I'm talking about here. So I just want, I just want to let you guys know that metrics, in, in my professional opinion and several other business owners, do not tell the whole story. Most business owners know this, and that's why metrics are not used on a monthly basis. Okay? It's for long-term measurements of success. I was contracted to provide economic development business, coaching, and advice for business community. Lee Iacocca once said, "Great leaders hire good people and get out of their way." And I think one of the biggest things that we had was, and this is probably my mistake on this, is publicizing this, and all that did was just stir rumors, stirred unanswered questions, and got people speaking, and it is probably something that we probably shouldn't have, just made such a big public spectacle about it. Now I'd like to address some concerns that the public has had, and speaking directly to people that have spoken on social media, and as well as out in the public. There are reasons why we can't explain why deals, all these deals that are going on, and projects that we're working on. I, I would think that this was common sense, but apparently it's not. So I want to make sure that we, people understand, the reason we don't say something about a project until it's solidified is because there's a lot of moving parts. If I say where a piece of property is, you know, somebody's looking to build a, a new business on a piece of property, and we don't own that piece of property yet, that piece of property can then be gobbled up by somebody else. And so it's important, again, to not share a lot of these projects in public until they are solidified. But unfortunately, because so many people have demanded, suggested that I'm less than honest because I'm not sharing this information, and because we're not moving forward anymore, I'm just going to go ahead tonight and share all the deals so that everybody understands what's been going on. A year ago, my first call was actually to McDonald's. I had a connection there. I knew the real estate people that worked with McDonald's, and they looked at our city, and they determined that the one spot that they wanted was on Broadway and Gun Barrel, directly across the street from Dairy. That particular spot is actually owned by Fennel Garcia. Now, as you guys know, that Fennel has come out here and openly spoke against what I've been doing. He also came and said that, if you remember, right before I signed the contract, he's basically, he flat-out said, "I've got buildings, I'm trying to give them away. Nobody's taking them, I'm even offering them for free." I'm sure you guys remember that. So I made a mental note of this, and I made sure that I did whatever I could to help him fill those buildings, and we did. Right before I was able to report, my, give my first report to the city council on our progress, I was able to fill his last building. He himself told me that this had never been done before, and all his buildings were filled. Now, I would think that somebody like that would be a little bit appreciative. I would think that somebody would like that would come in here and thank you guys for the service that you guys provided that filled his buildings. But instead, he got mad because the buildings that you guys owned, you guys leased to me to help fill those buildings. And I just thought that that was not tasteful, and I didn't feel like I should put my one contact with McDonald's in the middle of a, a deal like that. And so I pulled back on that. Next, I was told about a piece of property across the street from this building, actually, forty acres over there that was available. We've been talking about a hardware store, Forrest and I, so I called, I had contacts at both Lowe's and Home Depot. Lowe's flat-out said they were not interested. However, Home Depot was. But they did have one problem, they wanted a turning lane directly into the Home Depot. Now, this is nobody's fault here, but C-Dot wants three hundred thousand dollars to put a turning lane in. That might work in downtown Denver when you're putting in an IKEA in, but that doesn't work for the numbers here, when three hundred thousand dollars almost has costed a stupid building. And so that deal went away. I was then invited to the movie theater. Upon invitation, I shared my ideas, which I thought were more than valid, only to be ignored and not invited back. Simple things like announcing your movies weeks in advance so that I don't go watch them in Alamosa and then find out they're playing here. I even located an additional projector so that they could open up a second screen. I arranged to have this on payments, and possibly a portion of the sales of that projector made so that we wouldn't even have an out-of-pocket cost, only to not get a call back from anybody working at the movie theater. I then found a company to create commercials. You guys saw the commercial. This company was willing to do commercials for businesses in town and share those on the screen at the movie theater, and split revenue with the movie theater, again, at no additional cost to the movie theater. Again, this was ignored, and no calls were returned. Again, this was ignored and no calls were returned. Then we have URA and the infamous One Seventeen Adams. Originally spoke to the council about my ideas and about creating economic development here. Rio Grande Savings and Loan stepped up. They came to me and they said that they really enjoyed or really were excited about economic development and wanted to know how they could help. They had a building, One Seventeen Adams, in which was vacant and a foreclosure. They wanted to donate this to the city to help with economic development. I thought that was a great thing. So, like I usually do, instead of planning and preparing and doing most things people do, I jumped out of the plane and figured I'd build a parachute on the way down. I called somebody I knew that had a chain of sushi restaurants in small towns. She came down here, she drove eight hours, came down here, looked at One Seventeen Adams as well as other locations, and decided that One Seventeen Adams was the perfect spot for her, and she'd be willing to do it provided I put a commercial kitchen in the building. "No problem," I said, "I'll figure it out." I shook her hand, and away she went. Then, there was some legal issues with the building and getting that all done. Had nothing to do with the bank, it was mostly with the lawyers and figuring out how to legally get that building over to us. They then decided to give it to the URA, since the URA is a nonprofit, and that was the easiest transition. Now, before the URA got the building, because they didn't really want to take on the building, is my understanding, is they invited me over and asked me what my plans were with the building. I shared my project idea with them, the same one I just told you about, and they took control of the building. Now, the agreement that I had made with this lady was that I would put the commercial kitchen in, she would lease that building for two years, at which time then she could purchase the building. We would take that money that she purchased the building with and then go, well, I'd pull my money out that I invested into the kitchen and stuff and the upgrades, and then whatever was left, we'd go buy another building and do it again. Sounded like a great idea. Well, that didn't happen, as you can imagine, and they put out an RFP that I had to go and fill out a report to say what I was going to do with the building. So, I took the time to do that, fill out the RFP, submitted it. It's my understanding, I was the only one that submitted a project for the building. This is in December. I was supposed to hear something by February. Here we are now, and we still haven't heard anything. You know, I believe that the people on the URA are holding that up. I don't know why, but that project is not going to come to fruition at this point now. Then we got the famous golf course debate. That stirred a lot of pots. So, I wanted to address that and make sure all the facts, at least the way I see them, are out to you guys. So, yeah, several people have spoken out about the golf course. And there was some lack of information. On December sixth, I believe Jack with the golf course had posted on social media that they were going to close down the golf course if they didn't get more community support and quote, "The city has done nothing to improve their buildings, irrigation systems, or course land in the past." I was then surprised to find out that the city provides all the water at no cost. And Jack stated they didn't pay anything for the facility. The final surprise was when Jack stated in social media, "What else does Montevista have to offer? Secondhand stores and thrift stores aren't going to get people to stop." I quietly reminded Jack that those stores were being profitable without the assistance of the city. So, there are other people have offered, including myself, to help the golf course with some of their financial struggles. To my understanding, no, one of us have been contacted. That was in December. After questioning Jack, he told me that they don't have anybody that was trained in marketing. There was no marketing budget. There was no budget for building upkeep. They have five people on the board, but nobody actually taking the lead. Then I find out that we were, the city has given them eighty-three thousand dollars a year in water. And not having to pay for the grounds, I find this kind of crazy. So, then to top all this off, I came to the city. They came to the city asking for an additional three hundred some thousand dollars in order to get the golf course up to where it needed to be. So, yeah, you bet, I wanted to make sure that the city knew that. Or the city, I'm sorry, the residents, I wanted to make sure the residents knew that. And so, yeah, I posted this on social media. Jack came to that meeting and he said, I quote, "Why should I support you if you're not going to support us? I know a lot of people in the community who feel that way, and that paying you over four thousand dollars a month you receive could help the golf course." My response to that is, seriously, there's a hundred and thirty-six members. That's less than three percent of the population using the golf course. I don't think that qualifies as an asset. I am not against the golf course. I have never been against the golf course, but I am against the way it's being ran. Now, Kathy, you always ask for metrics, so I did some metrics for you. Membership fees on their website states that the golf course charges four seventy-five. That's the very highest. That's a single person, the highest you can pay. So, if a hundred and thirty-six members are paying the very highest that they could possibly pay, that totals sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. If we're giving them eighty-three thousand dollars in water, that's a deficit. That deficit comes out to a hundred and thirty-five dollars that the citizens pay for the golf course to have a member. That's kind of crazy. Now, I know they have additional fees, there's golf cart rentals, and there's some green fees and rental of equipment, and I understand that. But the numbers I gave you didn't include rent of the buildings, fixing up of the facilities, overhead of equipment, or anything of the kind. It was just strictly memberships. Now, I think it's important also to point out, Kathy, that you criticized me pretty hard on eleven-one. You stated, I quote, "I think you wait to put tenants in a building until you have legal lease of the lease agreement." I guess I'm kind of old-fashioned that way. And obviously, you were referencing the Guzlo Building. Now, we had an agreement with a tenant, we put him in early before I had an agreement with you guys. And the only reason we didn't have an agreement is because it got changed. We actually had an agreement, but you guys were in the middle of getting it changed. You guys haven't had a signed lease agreement with the golf course since two thousand twelve. So, and to use your words, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers, and I don't think that's very prudent. Okay, so now to go on to a couple of the deals that we were putting together so that you guys have the status on these deals and you know where we stand with these. I was in the talks with accredited instructors of drones about putting in a drone tech school out near the airport. The valley is the only area where FAA allows unmanned drone flights and has given official approval. This is a huge asset to this area, and I think you guys should pursue that in any way possible. We also have an investment firm. This investment firm's out of Denver. One of the investors in that firm takes a liking to San Luis Valley, and they asked to put four to twenty million dollars in the shovel-ready projects in the valley. Now, I had two shovel-ready projects for this. One of them was a truck stop east of town. I talked to both TA, who was willing to do a long-term lease if we could find somebody to build the facility. And when I mean long-term, they talked about twenty-five years. It's a long lease. I then talked to Flying J. They also expressed interest in putting up a facility east of town. They do not need money to do this and would be willing to do it on their own dime. They don't lease facilities, they build their own. I also had a gentleman willing to put in a shopping center across the street here. He asked me to find two to three anchor tenants that were willing to sign up. I have Chase Bank interested, I have a liquor store interested, and I also have Ace Hardware, although none of them are one hundred percent committed until we come up with the actual cost of the building, the cost of what it's going to be, but all of them have said, yes, we would do it if the numbers work. Now, this stuff takes time to put together. Unfortunately, we've run out of time. I've also made headway with a gentleman that wanted to put a restaurant in that shopping center as well. The Train Depot, it's another great opportunity I feel like is missed. The railroad was willing to lease it to the city for the purpose of economic development, but it was spoken out against it in the last meeting. I think this is kind of crazy because the building is empty, it's depreciating, it's a eyesore, it's got busted windows, it's a pigeon nest, and we got drug people, people that are on drugs living in it. And I think we need to take advantage of the opportunity that's in front of us and turn that building into something useful for the community. Now, I already had, I already made an agreement with somebody. The next thing I want to talk about is the agreement for RV parking. One of the biggest complaints everybody had when I interviewed business owners was there was no place for RVers to stop. There's no place for them to stop to get lunch, no place for them to stop and shop the community. I then went over and worked a deal with the bowling alley. She was willing to provide half of the bowling alley parking lot to RV parking as well as some RVs parking on the street. I understand we still need to put stripes down and make this work, but it's already March, we already have the Crane Festival here, already seeing RVs coming through, no signs up, nothing happening. I made that deal with her over six months ago. Now, the training center that I had planned, we talked about this, the Training Center, Mentoring Giants. I have several friends that have training centers, and I've talked with them over the numbers. We had plans for a very minimum of twenty people coming to town, spending three to four days, renting hotel rooms, eating three meals a day, and that's not even trying. I got a friend doing this in the middle of Kentucky, three hours from an airport, and he's doing a hundred people a month, doing a similar training, business training. But how am I supposed to do that in a community with people that don't even know me, talking negative of me, and then having people that are coming out asking me for help with their business, interacting with those people in the community? Then I had the tough one, and this is probably the nail in the coffin for me. I had a gentleman that, good friend of mine, willing to come down here, moving his business down here, bringing four employees with him with all their family. And he says, "Ron, and we already had a building picked out, we had plans, we're, everything was ready to go." He says, "Ron, you've been down there a year now." He goes, "Would you do it again?" And that's when I realized that I can't do this anymore. I just couldn't do it. I couldn't, I can't lie to them. And no, I would not do it again. So, the list goes on, but to spare everybody here, I just want to, I just want to say, I want to end on a positive note. We really did break the mold. For a short time, things were happening. We were making a difference. We managed to coach several businesses in town. We managed to start new companies. We managed to fill empty buildings. I made great friends, and I did meet people that really do care about the community. You do have people here that do care about it. The unfortunate thing is they don't speak up, and only the naysayers come in and speak up. And I feel like if they would actually could come together and the naysayers and the positive people would actually come together and the naysayers spent more time being more positive, you could really get a lot accomplished in this town. It's all right there. This town is ripe for the picking, and you have plenty of opportunities. Opportunities are not the problem. Opportunities are not the problem, and I think we've proven that over the last year. So, that's my report, and I hope we can end on a good note. I still have things to work out with Forrest. As you can tell, I still got projects we still need to wrap up. We've got other opportunities that are still coming down the pipeline, so the only thing I ask is that we can just finish out this contract just so that I can finish stuff with the city, and then we go our separate ways at that point. That's it.
Thank you, Ron.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
You bet.
Charlie, we got the Citizens Group coming up right now, so you'll have to wait, please. Said this, Citizens Group is coming up? Yes, ma'am, that's why you're coming up. Be sure and state your name, write it down, speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, good evening, councilors. I'm Margaret Hurd, a Montevista citizen, and we citizens, the ones behind me and maybe one is still back there, we citizens stand for unity in the community, and we will each speak for a few, a few words in defense of dissolving Mr. Douglas's contract. We've all been diligent in talking to citizens and businesses this whole past year, and we, a lot of us have attended the ribbon cuttings. We make a point of going in and congratulating people and thanking them for, you know, coming in, for keeping their businesses in town, and just hearing what they have to say. So, I was just going to make different points on the contract. Do you want to hear it? Where I thought that he was in breach of contract, a different point. Am I to go on with what we were going to say?
I would say that's up to you, but seeing the fact that Ron is pretty much said he's dissolving, or ending his contract, that those are probably points that have already... Probably, no need to worry, you could give him to, you needed to have on file for the records, but I don't...
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah.
That'd be good. Okay, I would like to read Lauren Howard's letter. Okay, he was unable to be here, and I think we have other letters coming also. So, Mr. Howard is the CEO of Rural Electric, REC we call it. So, he addresses you, councilors, for the past year, I have watched and considered the val- value of the contract the City of Montevista has with Local Business Assist, operated and owned by Mr. Ron Douglas. While even from the first presentation to the Montevista City Council by Mr. Douglas, I have had skepticism as to Mr. Douglas's claims. I decided to wait and see what results this effort would produce. To date, contrary to Mr. Douglas's assertions, there would seem to be very few true business successes that can be attributed to the programs of Local Business Assist. The money spent on this contract would be better spent on established efforts, such as the Upper Rio Grant Economic Development or the recent Valley Initiative Partners. I had the opportunity to visit with Ron Douglas and hear his methods for building, helping, or creating new businesses. Basically, his approach seems to be, quote, "just wing it," unquote, with simple enthusiasm being all that a person needs to become a millionaire. At this meeting with Mr. Douglas, he was interested in my offer of providing six months of free internet service to local business startups, an offer I made to Fennell Garcia at a city council meeting early last year, upon hearing of Fennell's efforts to get businesses into buildings that he owns. After some discussion with Mr. Douglas as to who should assess the viability of business startups, Mr. Douglas's answer was fundamentally, quote, "just trust me and let me decide," unquote. Councilors, you have given Local Business Assist ample time to show real results, but honestly, it is time to move on to other ways to build the Montevista community. I hope you will not vote to extend the contract with Local Business Assist past its current term. I had hoped to attend the city council meeting today, tonight, to provide my comments in person, but my work requires me to be in Denver. Sincerely, Lauren Howard. And he just lists himself as a resident. Do you want the rest of the people to sign here or not?
If they're going to speak, yes.
Do anybody want to speak?
Jim Poston, 47 Adams Street, here in Montevista. I know that Mr. Douglas mentioned the stumbling blocks put up by the URA. I am the chair of the URA, and as such, I would expect and should have been aware of any roadblocks. The RFP request for proposal for the 117 Adams property was determined to be inadequate for the needs of the RFP, and I have both, both the RFP response and the application available. I am also on the theater board, and Mr. Douglas made the presentation that, there were a number of things that he said, I do not recall a second projector, digital projector being mentioned. It is probably an oversight on our part that we did not correspond with Mr. Douglas with the courtesy of a phone call or a letter saying, thank you for your time and your presentation. I was prepared to ask the council to vote against renewing the contract. I believe that the money could have been better spent, and I, I had been to the budget meetings of last year where Public Works, Kids Connection, everybody had been asked to not only cut the fat, but to cut the muscle, and they were down to the bone, to use the city manager's expression. And yet, somehow, we had $4125 that we could pay to Mr. Douglas. So, but since he has, uh, expressed his opinions of what went on, what didn't went on, I am done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Council Margot Alexander. And I just wish to address and make a few comments in regard to Ron Douglas. Ron Douglas, when you first gave your speech to the council, I was behind you 100%. I defended you to other people. I bet for six months because I thought, by gosh, here was someone who had expertise, who had contacts, who could really help nursing. I really did, Ron. But over time, I became disillusioned because I did not see results. And I wish to heck you would have been more outspoken as to what you were doing, because I think the main problem is, we did not know what you were doing. And that was not, in my way of thinking, that was not the right way to go. You should have said, I'm dealing with this. All you had to say was, I'm working with this, I'm working with that. So, we would have been at least conscious of your mode of operation. And I think that was a fall under, or maybe you didn't understand how people think. But I do thank you for what you have done, and I'm sorry it ended the way it did, but I really think the city is moving forward. And I was just going to say, we have Torres Floral, we have Uniquely Delightful, we have the Finery Boutique, we have the Art Studio. If y'all haven't been to these places, they are fantastic businesses, and these people are dedicated to this community to do things that are good. We are on the right path. We need to keep forward. But y'all need to get out, I don't know if you do, I do. I go out and talk to people in business. I go out and talk to people at Safeway, on the street. What do you think? What can we do? Do you all go out and do that with the people and the businesses? Make yourself known, you started that one weekend. And this, you guys need to get out and have the people in the community know you, know what you stand for, know what you want to do, so they think that you are actually working with the town, not just being against them, because there is a lot of negativity, because people, maybe not they don't know, or they hear things, and things need to be put straight. And if we would have had some of this information, Ron, at the beginning, I think things would have been a little different. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Hi, I'm Wanda Harmon, I'm a citizen of Montevista.
Be sure and sign up there.
Oh, yes. The only thing that I would like to say is that I, I believe that when Mr. Douglas was hired by the city, we had not put out an RFP. He came, I believe, I may be incorrect about this, but I believe that he came and gave a presentation that was very impressive to people. And I think that when we saw that we might have a need, we should have put out a request for proposal from other contractors as well, so that we could have a comparison. I think that's a part of the problem that happened in the past. And as we go forward in the future, I'd like to see the city be a bit more careful in our selections. Not that we did a bad job, I don't really know, I couldn't tell when I would come to the council meetings and listen to the report. It sounded really good, but I didn't see any concrete, any reports. I didn't see any status that I can, that I can put my finger on. And so, it sounded good, but it felt like smoky mirrors. No offense, but that's how it felt. So, in the future, I hope that as a city, we are more careful in our hiring practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, you've already had your time.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order here, if you're wanting to transition, if that Citizens Group is done, which Mr. Spielman, I don't believe is part of, then you'd want to transition to the Citizen Comments portion, and Mr. Spielman, as other citizens, could have three minutes.
Okay. And that's my understanding, too.
Okay. Well, just hang on a second, so I can read this before you get carried away. Citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit comments to three minutes, council will not take action at this same meeting. I would hope that everybody respectfully does a very, just be respectful in any of these comments, please. Okay, Charlie, it's all you.
The work that Garcia's, Carol, Regenbaugh, Ms. Kim have done, and all the other outfits that have brought in businesses and are struggling to make them viable businesses, this is very, very important to the future of Montevista. We don't need to, we don't have any disagreeable, any disagreement about that. But I want to make this very important point. We are, and have been for decades, an agricultural-based community, and the, the ability of our economy to grow will not be with agriculture. It is limited by the limits of the amount of water we've got for irrigation. And therefore, the long-term goal, the overriding goal for the council and for all the other organizations and individuals in the valley is this, we must find non-agriculture businesses to bring them, bring them here if we are to expand and improve our economy. It's pure and simple, handwriting is on the wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there anybody else, citizen comment?
I have one. Can I give mine?
Yes, ma'am. Would you go be a citizen, please?
Yes, let me take off my hat. Shall I sign?
Yes, ma'am, you're a citizen now.
Okay, and I've got three minutes. I put this together just before the meeting this evening, and I molded over and wasn't sure I was going to actually do it, but I did. And I'm probably not going to be very well-liked. As I watch the Ron Douglas and LBA story unfold over the last year, and especially in these last few months, I have to say I'm astounded at some of the folks in this community. It's so very easy to sit behind a computer screen and say or be anything that you want to say or be. And it's also very easy to beat an already wary person into defense, causing them to overstate, defend, and essentially jump into the pigpen with the accusers and the naysayers. It seems to be sort of a mob mentality that's so common these days, of most of those behind a commuter, a computer screen. Most of those have never even come to a city council meeting and have bothered to take the time to see what goes on behind closed doors and what makes this city work. Most of them have never even met or talked with Ron Douglas in person, and I know he has offered. Most of the negativity has been directed at Ron Douglas the person, not the Local Business Assist as a business. I hesitate to use the word witch hunt, but that's what this seems to have become. You're welcome to your own opinions, and you're most certainly encouraged to voice them about the business itself, but so much has been said about the person and the personality. Ron has certainly said some questionable things, I agree with that. He has a directness that makes most people uncomfortable, to be sure. I've been accused of that myself. He's also the only person who's come to Montevista with a vision and a long-term, a vision of long-term improvement and growth. His business has helped others create their own vision and dream. He has invested his own money and his own time for the betterment of our community and also for his own gain. That's business. Anyone who's been in business understands that. Ron brought his wife and his family here, and I understand they hesitate and are even afraid to eat out or shop in the, or involve themselves in the Montevista community. And if you are one of those folks, hang on, I lost me. If you're one of those folks who made them feel unwelcome, then shame on you. We all need to rethink what our own town is to become, and we all need to rethink what we want people to be, Montevista to be known for. As I stated earlier, criticize the business, be upset over lack of progress, make demands about business performance, expect perfection, don't aim arrows at the person or the individual, don't make a family and his children feel uncomfortable in our community. I do believe Ron is a man of integrity, and he will finish up as much of what he has started as he can possibly do. Crass, harsh, vocal, inappropriate, yeah. At least you know where you stand with Ron Douglas. And if you bothered, if you bothered to spend some time with him and to get to know him, you know what he thinks. And now, you know where I stand and what I think. For the very first time in my life, I think I'm ashamed to say I'm from Montevista. I am not proud of Montevista and the way they've behaved.
Yes, sir.
Jason Moran. Council, let me speak towards you. Ron is who he is. He did his business. Personally, I feel it wasn't worth the money. The outrage you've seen in this community isn't because of him. It's because people came forward to you, expressed their opinions, and as happened in the past with these councils, you completely ignored them. And then you're shocked by how people are outraged? It's your responsibility. You hired this man, you're responsible for it.
Thank you, Jason.
So, I'm Jack, or Jake, my wife is Jill, so I guess Jack would be all right with that. But I'm with the golf course, and I just want to state a couple of things before we get to the golf course portion of this, and to Mr. Douglas. He stated in his thing, some money issues with the golf course, we, everybody knows it's been all, all over Facebook. When he's up here talking, you know, any statistician, any consultant can make the numbers look, or read however they want them to read. When he says we have 135 members, our money comes 40% from memberships, so then when you directly correlate that to water, the figures he gave, green fees open to the entire community, which you guys have asked, is 50 to 60% of our income. That was not included in that. I wanted to make that with that. Another thing with the water that has never been brought up, it's been brought out, it was said initially as a mistake, $400,000 of water a year, that got corrected by Forrest, he admitted that, thank you Forrest. $84,000 or whatever it is approximately is the figure. Now, that figure is what the city sells water to residents at, right? Is that actual cost to the city? No. So, that number is not correct either, when you look at it. Cost to the city is much less than that. You're selling that water to residents at that rate and saying, we're using that at that rate. I don't know what that would be, I'm not a water person, but it can't be the same rate as what's going to the person, to the residents. In other words, what does it cost the city to treat the water and put it there? That's the only cost to you. Okay? You're selling that water to residents at a profit, and you're counting that profit to the golf course as well. Something that's never been mentioned, okay? You also, with the water at the golf course, that this money keeps getting brought up, we pay the pump bill to pump it. we pay the pump bill to pump it. $1,800 to $2,000 a month. If we don't pump it, it doesn't get put on there. You're giving us nothing. Who pays that pump bill if we don't exist? The city. Okay? Those are just numbers I wanted to correct that he brought up with the golf course with that. Mr. Douglas, I respect you coming here. I respect you wanting to have a vision for this city. I think something you missed dearly, there's a lot of established businesses in this city, and you went over them. There is not one established business I've talked to that agrees with you. You tried to create new ones. You tried to go around. You verbalized publicly, "We need good food. There's no good food. We need this. We need that." There's a lot of people that work hard here that are providing jobs already that that was overlooked. When you come into a small town, a small community, I think that was really against you. We're already tight-knit, small group. You're trying to come in and pry that... I just... from me to you, I think that was one of the biggest points that really put a wedge in this community between us. The things that were already established, Fanel, Ronnie at Mountain View, others that I know.
Hey, Jake, your three minutes is up, bud.
Okay. Thank you.
You actually went over, so... oh, forgive me. My timer had you. Is there anybody else?
For the record, my name is Raina Bowser. Lifelong resident, business owner for 30 years, managed probably five years before that. I don't have anything planned. I had planned to come before the council with some probably more positive direction two weeks from now, and I'll still do that. I think as I stand here today, I'm on the verge of tears. I'm heartbroken. I'm heartbroken at the division. I'm heartbroken because a year ago, when this council was new, they might not have had the guidance that they needed to have. Somebody shows up with a great idea that coincides with some of you ran on, and it seemed like a great thing. Maybe with more guidance, more experience, you had done what Wanda had suggested, that maybe you would have put that out for bid and talked to the best people. We've had experience with Mr. Douglas. He's given us some insight as to how to grow our business. There have been some things along the way that I think had other to do with Mr. Douglas's outspokenness, his maybe not always as calm as he should be ways that we wanted him to say it. I was taught 20 years ago, when I sat in your seat, that we didn't do backdoor deals, that we didn't give benefits to people who were directly associated with the city, that things have been. I know that we spoke with Mr... with your city manager a year ago, Fanel had also done that, about acquiring the Guzlo building or at least looking at it. We were both told that they would get back to us. Next thing we find out, Mr. Douglas has lease on it. That's not how things are supposed to work. There have been a lot of things that have happened, and I only have three minutes. Again, I don't know where things went through, and I don't know how they fell, but I think maybe if there's division in the city, there's also division among communication here. And it has been... I can't use that word. It's been sad for all of us, and here we are tonight. Mr. Douglas has hard feelings. We have hard feelings. Y'all have hard feelings. And I'm heartbroken, as I think each of you are and everyone in this room. I do thank everyone for trying to do what they've done.
Thank you, Raina. Anybody else?
Mr. Big Mouth. I'm Wayne Whitner. I've been a resident since 98. Now, Mr. Douglas, if I... if I was growing up and that talked to somebody behind your back, I don't even think I ever mentioned your name, but if I am, accept my apology. But the only thing, I love each and every one of you that's in this room. I respect each and every one of you that's in this room. We all come from different backgrounds. Running the business, I don't know how to do it. All I know is that I have been in some of these businesses. I haven't been in all of them, and I apologize for that. But the only thing, have we gone, and like other people said, Mr. Douglas and some of the other speakers, have we talked to each other and see where you are? How we can get together? How we can join together? Because I tell people, we talk in three different ways. We talk with our mouth, we talk with our eyes, and we talk with our body. Which one is speaking for us? Is it our mouth, our eyes, or our body? Let us... there's a lot of hard feelings. Let us learn to love each other. Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor. Fanel Garcia, I really had no intention in coming up here and speaking at all, honestly. with Ron. Ron came to me early on. We had small discussions about the McDonald's deal. I'm not saying Ron does or does not know anybody at McDonald's. I don't know that. I will say that our discussion was at the old Amoco station, was that Chuck Hauser had told me that McDonald's has looked at the property twice. So if Ron knows somebody at McDonald's, cool. If he took that from what I said and now is bringing that up, whatever, so be it. If he do know somebody, have him call me. I think that's the key. And I think somebody said that, is there's no communication. And I'll sit up here on and straight up, "Did I not tell you guys Ron filled two of my buildings? And did I not say thank you to Ron?" He did. Not saying that. We talked about the lease, six months free lease. That's still in effect. I never took anything away from Ron. So I tell you little personally, you calling me out, that's okay. It's all good. Where I think this thing went wrong, and it's the manipulative ways that things have happened. In my opinion, I came up here, I said this since the very beginning, because people were talking. I never said anything bad about Ron on Facebook. I never did that. I never said nothing. But, and I told you guys this, and I said this in front of Ron, it ain't... Jason just said it again, it ain't Ron's fault. It ain't Ron's fault. He's a businessman. He's going to do what he has to do to make money. Kathy said it. But the first time I said that stuff was going to hit the fan was when I heard that Mr. Douglas got the old police station. The rumor was for a dollar. He clarified that and said it was $500 a year. Okay? But then now we're renting, and he's making money for six or 650, whatever the case may be, a month. So he's making money. Not his fault. It's your fault. Some of these ladies back here said, "You guys need to do a better job of who we're hiring." That was manipulative. I don't know if that's Forrest and Ron and how those contracts came about. I don't know if you guys knew about that or not, but whatever the case may be, that is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Fanel. Anybody else?
Okay. Mayor, I just would like to point out one thing, because I was called out on Facebook by Mr. Douglas, and I didn't appreciate that. He said I had not reached out to him at all. As a matter of fact, I have a copy of the email. Mr. Douglas contacted me on October 10th and said that he would like my personal information to contact me, which I didn't necessarily want to do. I responded to Forrest and said, "I would be happy to sit down with Ron and Forrest here at City Hall, where it belongs, in my opinion, and discuss the plan, your ideas, my thoughts." That's a lie. Sorry.
Gary, did you say you had something?
Yeah.
Do you want to be a citizen?
My name is Gary Johnson. I am a citizen of Montavista. And very much interested, some know this already, in economic development in this town. Because of that, I was very much interested when Ron Douglas came to town, and we have spent several meetings, talked to him probably more than most, in order to find out directly what exactly is going on, what's your plan, what's happening, what is planned. In fact, the part about why didn't we know what you were doing, he made a very lucid presentation early on and was criticized for it because, "Well, we don't want to know what's planned. We want to know what's actually happened." And that included McDonald's and several other of the ventures that he spoke of. He's done an incredible job, as far as I'm concerned, in stirring up the community. I'm sorry if some of that's negative, but this community needed to be stirred up, and we needed to take a hard look at where we're going and what we're doing to get there. I'll finish this quite simply with, if you're a detractor and a naysayer about what Mr. Douglas has done, and I haven't heard this very much, matter of fact, I really haven't heard it at all, but what is your suggestion for an alternative to help develop our town? We've talked about a lot of businesses that are coming in that didn't have anything to do with Mr. Douglas. All I have to say about that is success begets success, and it will continue as long as there's some root cause, whether it's an economic developer from the front range or whatever. We've had so much come into this town that have told us all these wonderful ideas, but the only individual that has actually generated actual business, granted, a lot of it is still planned, but there are some that are actually here. Some of them, if some have come in, how do we know how that other business has come in? Many times, it's... businesses are interested in other businesses. If there's business going on, then that's someplace I want to go. If there's businesses dying, that's not someplace that I'm interested in. In any case, I simply close with, tell me, and I've talked to at least one upstanding citizen about this, what is your suggestion for an alternative to help develop our town? And the answer was, "Well, nothing, because people are just coming in voluntarily nowadays." And that's just... that's fine, but it relates back to success begets success. What is your suggestion for an alternative to help develop our town? Please answer the question as detailed and completely as possible.
As I sit here and look at the youth that are sitting in this room to see that this is our future and what they're seeing here, I'm kind of ashamed, but respectfully, this is where you... when you step out of your comfort zone, and as youth, you have to at some point in your life, and this, when I stepped up to be the mayor, I stepped out of a comfort zone. And I see all these folks in here, and I appreciate the comments. I respect this community and the people here, very much so. I've lived in Montavista for a very long time and always enjoyed this city and the people here, everybody. There's people that have come from working hard their entire life to build the businesses that they've built, and I've watched them get scrutinized and bad things said about And it's sad to me to see that. We're all in this together, so when we're scrutinizing each other, you know, somebody makes a... they build a good business, and they get accused of how they got to that point, that's bothered me. But to see you youth here, it's not all fun and games out here, as well as you know, but don't let it deter you from ever wanting to step up and be a part of your community, ever, because it's so important that you do this. I mean, I can't tell you any more than that. A lot of us have stepped out of our comfort zone. Jason, he has. He was on council. Fanel Garcia's wife was the mayor for a long time, and there was a lot of bad things back then, too. So respectfully for everything that everybody has said here tonight. All I'm going to say is thank you, because we're all going to learn from this tonight. I am. You have any more comments? Ron, I'd let you step right up here, but you had quite a few minutes, man, so I'm going to just keep it, if you don't mind.
I was just called fired, so I'd like you to please look at that email, make sure my email's on.
Well, I will give this to you need us, so it will be public record. Okay, we're going to move along. You going to start that for us, or Jake for the golf course?
Okay. Well, just to start this out this evening, councilors, as you know, we had a previous work session, and we discussed, you know, moving forward and discussing a lease with the golf course board, and the city attorney and I met with two representatives of the golf board. John and Jake, and, you know, we kind of went down and there were two alternative designs, either one similar to the one that Alamosa has or the one that the city already had in place. We kind of looked at the Alamosa one, and it's really more of a commercial services agreement. And so all the parties agreed that we basically stick with the same lease format. You have that amended lease. There were a few questions and a few things that were probably antiquated or, you know, just didn't make sense anymore, like, you know, it said that they would meet with the Parks and Rec director, which we don't have a Parks and Rec director, or really Parks and Rec department, we have Rec department. Anyway, just basically some minor changes to that and some updates, some dates. And the golf board, you know, they met and went through the lease and actually, it was signed on their behalf today. Also, in that discussion, we talked about, you know, in the work session and then also when we had that meeting, we talked a little bit about, you know, they're still working on a business plan. You have this evening all their financial statements for the last couple of years, their year-to-date, and their budget. And so those are all that documents the city asked for, as well as their articles of incorporation and their bylaws. So you have all those documents we requested. The only pending document would be, you know, kind of an updated business plan. So from that regards, I think I'll let the golf course folks talk about. One of the things was what their priorities were as far as capital needs. And so I think if they want to address the lease itself and whatever else they have to talk to, I think that's what I have to start out with.
Thank you, Forrest.
So with the lease, I think you guys all have a copy of the lease. We, as a board, we appreciate Judge and Forrest meeting with us and doing the, going over the lease and working out some of those things. The only thing as a golf board that we had, and we want to make sure, I mentioned this to Kathy today, number 16 and number nine talked about having the buildings inspected in agreement to this lease. And we feel it's important that, I would like each of you to come over there and look at it and see what kind of shape they're in. Forrest said he could do it, or with, Rob or whoever, and we could get that. I think that needs to be established as soon as possible. There's snow around it right now. We can't, you know, once the snow is kind of totally gone, that'll make it a little bit easier. As far as our business plan, we will have that to you at the next city council meeting. We're still working on that, getting all of our exact, what we spent our money on last year, itemized more than just, you know, supplies or whatever for that. Our top three capital things that you guys wanted to know. Number one is for sprinkler heads and the sprinkler system valves, for $6,000. That will be our number one thing. We don't have grass. We don't play golf. Doesn't matter if we mow it. You know, you gotta be able to water the grass. So that's why we feel that's the number one. Number two is a new fairway mower. A new fairway mower is about $50,000. Probably get them cheaper, certain brands, but we're looking at John Deere or Toro. Just, that's what everyone's told us, or otherwise you're buying a new one in three or four years. A used one that we're looking at is about $8,500. That has, I don't know exactly how many hours on it. There's several different levels that were kind of the old refurbished, re-done mower. The third thing, I talked to Kathy today a little bit, was a point-of-sale system that the golf association puts out. We thought it would be about $4,000 to $5,000, but upon further investigation, there's a $150 to $300 maintenance fee per month, all 12 months out of the year, to do that. Now, what that would do for us is be able to track people coming in, non-members, have email addresses, send out tournament notices, see, you know, we could do a lot of things with that as far as tracking who's coming in. We could also book tee times online. Not as critical in Monte. We're not as busy as Alamosa or the bigger courses. A lot of people just walk on and you don't even need a tee time. So that's something we gotta discuss, the value of that. The fourth thing that we wanted on our top things is the in-kind services of the city. I think this has kind of always been understood, Forrest. Use of the backhoe, use of the dump trucks, you know, digging up the water line if we need it, whatever that may be, would be the fourth line item on our top four things for our business plan for this year. And we wanted to let you know those before the full business plan with that. So, thank you, and in the next meeting, we will have that and present that to you.
Thanks, Jake. You guys have a good night. Go home and behave.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a comment relating to the value of water. Our water enterprise is essentially a nonprofit. So when you say, "Well, that can't be the cost of producing the water." The cost that we charge our customers is based on a rate study, and that rate funds the operation of the water enterprise. So that rate we charge is actually what it costs to make the water, pay the employees and all the equipment. So the amount of money you're talking about is lost revenue, okay? And I'm just pointing it out, I'm just saying, that value is that value. We don't make money on water. So, I just want to clarify.
Thank you, Forrest.
The next contract is LBA, as it's been addressed, that it is over with, correct? I don't know the right wording I should say on that, but...
Can I ask a question about that? If Ron mentioned some things that needed to be finished up that were currently in process?
Excuse me, but I don't think there's supposed to be a discussion about this item unless there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, it's not a discussion, I just had a question. Does that mean that... Oh, is that necessary, I guess? Is the question, is it necessary that contract run its term while some of that is finished up? Or are they just not connected at all?
I really don't know if I have a good answer for that, counselor.
Okay. It's all right. It's just something that we can discuss, maybe you need to table.
Well, I do have concerns. And I guess, Forrest, I was wondering if you would please advise counsel in person and the public that's here that has concerns about what transpired in the city clerk's office on Wednesday afternoon.
Well, there was some emails from the city clerk where she captured pieces of Facebook conversations, screenshots, which she sent to the city council members and myself. And Mr. Douglas came to City Hall, and I would say that he startled our city clerk with his question, as well as, you know, a fairly aggressive nature, such to the level that she was concerned about it. So, you know, I came up and talked to him, and, you know, he obviously had known about these emails that were sent to the city council, which, as I put it in correspondence to the council, as rather discreet by. But, you know, long and short of it was that he was pretty upset and it created, caused concern for our clerk. And, you know, the clerk's office is in the back of the building and it's fairly isolated. And, you know, she was upset by it. And, you know, I was kind of upset by it, too, but, you know, we were able to have a reasonable conversation. I explained to him what they were about. You know, obviously, if he wanted the copy of those, he could have done a court request. But it startled Nita enough that, you know, she really wasn't able to respond to that constructively. So, you know, that wasn't a very positive experience.
Did a police officer respond?
We had one standing by. We have a protocol here in City Hall that if an employee that is in public contact feels threatened or highly concerned, that, you know, we have a code word phrase, and that did take place. And, you know, I had the officer stand by down the hall while I wouldn't talk to Mr. Douglas. And so the officer wasn't necessary to, you know, have any contact with them. But, you know, certainly it was, it's, that level of concern is why we have that, that kind of protocol. Mr. Douglas was not aggressive with me, but, you know, I often find that to be the case when we have issues at the front desk with other folks as well.
Well, in my opinion, given that concern and the escalations of some of the outbursts that have occurred, that this person is a contractor with the city of Montevista, and I make a motion to terminate his contract as per the termination agreement. In his contract, terminated by the city for its convenience and without clause of any nature by giving written notice of at least seven days in advance of the termination date. In event that such termination, of the termination, the contractor will be paid for the reasonable value of the services rendered to the date of the termination.
Have a motion on the floor?
Got a quick question, if that's possible. Is there anything that needs to get done, that he's in the works of before we terminate this contract?
Well, Mr. Douglas has indicated there's a number of things he's working on, and I suppose within the, if that is the council's pleasure within that timeframe, I could certainly meet with him and, you know, get what information that I could.
Mike, would you have some input on this?
Well, the options, I think, would be that the council wait till August, I mean, till April 30th and then not renew the contract. That's probably the simplest and maybe cleanest way to do it. The other option is you've got 30-day notice in advance for cause, but by that point, the contract's over. So, the other termination clause is by giving seven days' written notice, as Counselor Lorenz has indicated, and then figure out what might be a reasonable value for his services. Not sure that would be an issue, or if you just prorate the amount of days and call it a deal. But those would be the two options, I would say. Either the seven-day notice as proposed, or wait till the 30th and it ends at that point.
Still have a motion. We need a second.
We gotta have some discussion. We have to, until there is a second. If there's no second motion, then it's...
I would second that. Because it is unacceptable to put anybody's self in danger or even to make them feel at danger at all.
It's been moved and seconded. There we go, the termination of the seven-day in advance termination date. In the event of such termination, the contractor will be paid for the reasonable value of service rendered to the date of termination. And upon such payment, all obligations of the city to the contractor under the agreement will cease. Termination pursuant to the subsection shall not prevent either party from exercising any other legal remedies which may be available to it. Any more discussion? Nita?
I do have another question, and I would like the city attorney to please weigh in on it. Pursuant to what happened in the city clerk's office, I think is a clear indication of conflict of interest. And I believe that there are counselors who are in conflict of interest in regards to the LBA Local Business Assist Program. And would like, maybe, I'd like to have our city attorney please explain the conflict of interest in his opinion. And the counselors have a chance to decide if they're, they think they're in conflict of interest and recuse themselves from this vote.
I mean, the only one that I know has a, at least from my understanding, is Counselor Segala. And I'm not really sure of the complete nature of that potential issue other than the fact that, I guess, you're leasing from him at the church or something? Okay. I guess the issue of conflict really is addressed by the individual as to whether he thinks he has a conflict. But, so that decision of whether to abstain from a vote is up to the individual council member. However, in trying to determine whether there is a direct conflict, whether one should do that, the fact that there is a leasehold interest, a potential business relationship, I suppose, that probably would present a red flag that probably there's an issue of a conflict. And, you know, rather than, you know, Counselor Segala putting himself in a position of, "Why did you vote one way or the other?" Depending on whichever way he's gonna vote here. I would probably recommend that he abstain from voting just because there is that appearance of impropriety and a direct leasehold interest of some kind. I don't know if anyone else has anything like that with regard to Mr. Douglas. But I think that's fairly direct and certainly would be probably my recommendation that he not abstain from voting.
So that way, everybody just kind of knows. I did start leasing the church on 256 South Broadway the beginning of February. Something that has been in my heart since 1997. Know what I mean? Like, you know, it's not, you know, because of, you know, Ron's position or anything like that. It was an open door, you know, that my belief, God allowed me to kind of get in there based on what the word says, you know. But at the same time, you know, I also agree, you know, that, I didn't even think about that. I thought about it earlier, but I was just thinking about, you know, safety of, you know, the city employees and all that. But I do understand that, so I do want to actually excuse myself from the vote, you know, because I do think that, now, you know, that we're talking about it is, I believe the right thing to do.
Well, since that subject came up, I would probably have to say the same thing. I hadn't really really thought about it, but since you're discussing it, I don't know what Barry has. Everybody knows my personal opinion about... Everybody knows my personal opinion about Ron Douglas. I appreciate his work, but I'm currently counseling with him on a new business venture. So, I think that probably would fit into the category of recusing from...
Right, and, and the problem is, if you vote one way, someone could say, "It was because of this," either trying to help him out, or trying not to help him out. So, you're in a real tough spot, no matter what you do.
Other than air on the side of caution.
Right, that would make the most sense.
And that, so that just kind of leaves a predicament, I guess.
Not really, we can vote.
Nita? Please?
Aye.
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 Actually, I don't have much left, so we covered most of the matters. I did a report on the golf course lease meeting, which I kind of recapped, and obviously, we had that discussion, and I'm assuming that the council will consider the lease at your next meeting, along with additional items of the golf course. The wage classification study that I keep promising I'm gonna deliver to you, I wanted to have a consultant present that to you, and I actually have a firm date for that now. He has a lot of commitments, but at your April 4th council meeting, he is committed to be here for that, so we'll get the document out to you that week, and then he'll come and present and kind of go through the methodology and the logic and that kind of thing. And then, this morning, Chief Rosecrans and I attended the breakfast with the school board members, and Dave Repke was here, and Superintendent Webb, and that's where we found out that, you know, Pennies is closing, and I don't know if you know, he's the manager there. So, that was, that kind of overshadowed a lot of the other things that we talked about. But, we continue to talk about some school security items, and, and different things going on between, you know, with the district and the police department, and, you know, the, the police department's been, I think, forming a really nice relationship with the school district, so that was a pretty positive discussion. And then, we just talked about some other things going on in the valley, and the school districts, and school funding, and the legislature, and the legislature's very interesting this year, so... That's really all I had for this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. All right, thank you.
Thank you Forrest.
Forrest.
Nika?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Sorry, Nika.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's like I've been waiting all night.
You are a patient woman.
Just a quick thing, actually. We have an applicant to join the Urban Renewal Authority Board. Her name is Laura Conchelos. She actually audited our last meeting, which was earlier this week, and it was so much fun that she decided to volunteer for the board.
Yes, from her.
She is a resident of Montevista and has a business here as well, and I think it got microcosm in your packet, like really small or something, but, anyway, we would certainly ask you to appoint her to the URA Board. I think she'd be a great addition, and she's younger than most of us, so that'd be great as well.
So, we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, we do.
I would like to move to appoint Laura...
Conchelos?
Conchelos to the URA Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint.
Tell me her name again.
Laura Conchelos.
Laura Conchelos.
That's as good as I get, yeah.
Okay. To the URA Board. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Bellator.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, we'll give her the good news.
I would be quick. I had a really chaotic big start to the week, so I didn't get my packet, and I'm barely catching up on Monday. But, I just wanted to be here in the light, you know, kids connection is still moving forward, doing the best we can with all the illness going around, and it never stops, so, we're hoping that by next week, we'll be back with full staff. We've had at least one staff member out, like, every week, and it's been two of us that have just been back and forth, and all of our children, and so, it's been really crazy. Our numbers have been down a little bit over the last week and a half, a week and a half because of all the sickness. The school district is also dealing with it. It's been really crazy. We're still seeing about 50 kids every day after school, but we are really happy, we have sun outside after the crazy snowstorms that we've been dealing with, so we can actually stay outside for almost a half an hour after getting kids. So, we're running off a lot of energy, which means less chaos when we walk into the building. So, other than that, I don't have any really big news for you. We are working on planning spring break, and then we will be, after we get through spring break week, we'll be planning our big summer, three months, so hopefully, that will all work out. We've decided to just do the Monday through Thursday during spring break, to kind of keep with the way this, the summer schedule's working, and to honestly give my staff a little bit of time to actually spend some quality time with their kids during spring break. A lot of parents don't realize that when we spend so much time taking care of their kids, our kids kind of get put on the back burner, so I wanted to give them at least one day during the week, that they can have some extra time to just spend with their kids and not have to try to find time to give their kids, while giving everyone else's kids some attention. So, other than that, that's really all we have going on, so if you have any questions, I'm all done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I actually have one thing I want to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., for Lawrence, the city manager, and Counselor Segala, we will be heading out to the Crane Fest, and then after the Crane Fest, we will be going uptown to do more visiting with the mayor.
It's really kind of fun, Victor.
I'm excited.
Victor, you guys have anything?
I don't know, just was gonna actually touch up on that, and just, just mention that I am actually excited to, to check it out, and to walk around, and maybe do some hopscotch.
Gary? Just, I was just gonna mention the Crane Fest, I don't think I can say enough about it. It's, it's on tomorrow, starting at 10:00, and there's some great booths and events in there. Mine is one of them, but I won't say anymore about that. But, all day, of course, Saturday, and then the hours change, but whatever, it's, typically 10:00 to 3:00 on Sunday, but starts tomorrow at, at 10:00, so come on out, put on your crane hats, and see there.
Why the catties, I don't care.
Okay, well, I'll be at the Crane Festival tomorrow in the information booth, so if you need to be informed, come to the information booth. Also, I've been working with the folks, it was, it was a collaborative effort of folks who put together the Del Norte Riverwalk, and we are trying to use, if we can get some funding from the city of Montevista, we're trying to use that base funding and leverage it to be as much as it can be for the golf course. And I think we can kind of pull together some funding, we have to decide how much the city can put forth, of course, and okay that, and then we can go forward with a proposal to some of those folks with, really with the hope of, of maybe some continued funding down the line. But, it's kind of exciting. I, I'm not sure if everybody really understands how many, my gosh, there are a lot of people out there who really want to see the San Luis Valley go. It's not just a particular city, but they've done a beautiful job on the, on the Riverwalk in Del Norte, and if you want to see it, it's gonna, it's just gonna get better. They're gonna have a wave this summer, and they're gonna do a lot of different things, and it's all done very ecologically, and it's a collaboration of people. So, I'm kind of trying to affiliate our golf course with them, and see if we can't get something exciting going for our little town.
Let's see, this coming Saturday, along with Crane Fest, is Coffee with Cop for Montevista, and that's at Mountain View Restaurant from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, so hopefully, we can spend some time at Crane Fest and with, with, at Coffee with Cop. I would like to personally thank Chief Rosecrans for being instrumental in setting up the first-ever valley-wide Coffee with Cop last week in Alamosa. I believe he was very instrumental in making that happen, and from all the pictures, I had another commitment, I couldn't go, but from all the pictures, it was a huge success, and thanks for doing that, Chief. District Library Board meeting is coming up this week, and the Crane Fest, I will be at the information booth, and neighborhood, let's see, Back the Bark, and Crime Stoppers, and that whole organization will be at the Crane Festival as well, and I know that there's a whole bunch of people volunteering to participate there, in that area as well, and that's all I have.
I want to hear about the Crane Festival, Friday, Saturday, the Bassett Building will have a sneak preview of the new business there, and they invited us to have the Transportation Museum open for the Crane visitors during that period of time, so we will have the Transportation Museum, the society, the district historical society will have the Transportation Museum open from 5:00 to 8:00 on Friday and Saturday, along with the Bassett Building, you know, we open the, the pre-sneak preview of what's gonna be going on there. Chef Carol will be there to serve, I think there's gonna be some music, and I'm not sure what else.
I think the, the Farm Brewery is gonna have...
Farm Brewery is...
Yeah, we'll have their, their Crane Brew.
The Crane Brew?
The Crane Brew.
There's special cranberry. Police Department, the K-9 unit, and Crime Stoppers, all have a booth at Crane Fest, and the K-9 unit's selling t-shirts, so...
Very good.
25. It's running, it's running fast.
Yeah.
It's racing, Robin.
Yeah. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It was a good crowd. I wish we could see these kind of crowds when everything positive is going, and not just when bad things are happening, in all due respect, but I really don't have a whole lot. Just enjoy the weekend, enjoy the Crane Fest, and, you know, encourage the youth. I don't know if many of you heard today that there was somewhere through the night, or during the day, some young man took his life? And that's our future, guys. Well, there was a lot of local people knew who it was, so...
He came to be here for a year.
Is that what it was, no? Well, whether it was here or not, so it's, it's something we need to look at, because we get so involved with the things that happened within the city, that are we really... Nika's probably the only one that has the most on-hand contact with the youth, and we need to remember that. But, thank you all for being here tonight, and look forward to seeing you again. Meeting adjourned until...
Question?
March 21st.